Good evening from the LNP Lancaster Online newsroom here in downtown Lancaster. My name is Jade Campos and I'm a reporter with LNP Lancaster Online. And I want to welcome you today to our forum with the three Democratic candidates for Lancaster County Commissioner. We'd like to thank the candidates for agreeing to participate tonight. So, thank you Janet Diaz, Bob Hollister, and Alice Yoder. Welcome to our studio. Our purpose in holding tonight's forum is for you to learn as much as possible about the candidates for this office and where they stand on the most important issues of the day before you vote. This forum was designed to enable you as the voter to hear from the candidates in their own words. The primary is Tuesday, May 16th. This candidate forum is being livestreamed live on Lancaster Online. It is also being recorded and will be available for replay on our website through the primary. You can also read about this event in LNP later this week. We're going to begin this forum by allowing each of the candidates to introduce themselves with an opening statement. The order in which the candidates will talk has been determined by a little raffle by drawing numbers just before the forum began. So, we will begin with Janet Diaz.
Hello, everyone. Thank you, LNP. I want to tell everybody that individuals need protected in our community. And one thing that I really do need to reiterate is the fact that we need to protect our elderly, victims that are sexually assaulted in prison, and as well as the disabled and the mentally ill. I always support the union. I have gone out and have picketed for the unions. You know, we often, we often see this community being ignored. Every day, our personal freedoms are being stripped away. And mostly, you know, the front as the government seek to attain more power to basically own us rather than serving the citizens. Y yo estoy aquí para decirle a todo que en esta comunidad tenemos que estar seguros que la libertad nuestra no nos lo quiten. Muchas gracias.
All right. Our next candidate to give opening statement will be Bob Hollister.
Hi, I'm Bob Hollister. Born and raised here in Lancaster County. I'm excited about the opportunity to continue serving the folks in Lancaster County. Former school superintendent for nearly 14 years, hoping to carry that service forward into the Commissioner's seat. There are a lot of great things about Lancaster County that we all know about, but there are some things that, that we need to address, too. There's a marginalized population out there that really could use some support and some help. And so, I'm here to hopefully earn your vote to, to get into that spot where I can make a difference for all the citizens here of Lancaster County. I, too, want to thank Lancaster Newspaper for hosting this event for us, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
And now, our final candidate who will give an opening statement is Alice Yoder.
Well, thank you Lancaster Newspaper for having this opportunity so the voters can learn more about us. And thank you to all the voters for tuning in to hear about us. My name is Alice Yoder and excited to be here. I, for the past 30 years, as a nurse, a healthcare executive, and, and serving as on the local and county planning commissions, I've been able to collaboratively work with community leaders, social service organizations, businesses, schools, and county government to address some of the most complex issues facing our community. We have achieved some remarkable results by coming up and whether it was a program, it was a system change, or whether it was a policy, we were able to receive some and get some really good results. I am running to be county commissioner to continue that work and to improve county services and to address some of the critical issues facing us today, and really excited for the opportunity. Thank you.
All right. Now, we'll get started with the questions for the candidates. The first question that I want to ask is, what is the most important duty in your mind of a county commissioner? And we'll start with Ms. Diaz.
I believe that our community needs to be protected from health issues. I can say that many times people forget that our incarcerated have been assaulted, and that can lead to HIV and also other diseases. And it's important for us to focus with these victims because many victims have spoken to me and they're afraid. So, the safety and the health of these incarcerated is very important. Nosotros necesitamos ayudar los que están en la cárcel, que han tenido violado y que tienen enfermedades como el HAV y seguir ayudando a todas las víctimas que tengan medicamento y resultado con la comunidad.
Mr. Hollister.
Yeah, the county commissioners, at the end of the day, the county commissioners really should be trying to make life just a little bit easier for our citizens here. And that, that spans a whole lot of different things. I mean, that's, that's talking about protecting democracy at the ballot box. It's talking about building relationships, standing up to extremism, creating more economic, economic opportunities through better jobs, which would then lead to more affordable housing. So, you know, to say that the commissioners have one most important thing is really difficult question. There's so much that the commissioners can do for the citizens of Lancaster County, and that's just to name a few. But at the end of the day, the commissioners really just may, need to make life just a little bit easier for, for the common citizen here in the county. And that's what I, that's what I aim to do. We have some great ideas to do that.
And Ms. Yoder.
Yeah, I think there are probably two most important roles that the county commissioners play. One is to make sure that the services that are provided in our county are working at the highest quality level that they can be. And I also think that's the basic service that should be provided, but I also think the county commissioners have a responsibility to think about the county for the future. So, we need to be prepared for the next 10, 20 years so that we're not surprised 10, 20 years from now and think, what happened to Lancaster County? So, I do think that visioning out to see what could be and then developing programs or initiatives or services or policies that are going to improve where we are right now so that down the future for our children and our children's children, we have a really high quality of life for everyone in Lancaster County.
And so, this election, primary voters will nominate two of you to run in the fall, but only one of you is likely to win the election given the partisan makeup of Lancaster County and its history of electing two Republicans to lead the three-member board. How do you view the role of a minority party commissioner in our county government? And we'll start with Mr. Hollister this time.
Well, first of all, I, I don't, I sort of disagree with your premise. I mean, I think we need to be a little more optimistic about that. It's an off-year municipal election. Folks are frustrated with the current Republican leadership here in the county, particularly Commissioner Parsons, who's, who's very much aligned with Doug Mastriano, who is really a part of the radicalized cult portion of the Republican Party. And so, I think the assumption that it's just going to be one Democratic Commissioner is probably incorrect. I think we need to aspire to have two of us on that board. Having said that, should, should it only be one Democratic Commissioner, and then that person, whoever that is among the three of us, has to work with the other two commissioners in a respectful manner. But I also think that a part of that work needs to occur off the seventh floor. Folks, commissioners need to get out and meet with people wherever those folks are gathering, and that means across the whole county. That includes, you know, those community centers that may not necessarily be the towns and boroughs, but they might be the fire halls, they might be the elementary schools. And so, the commissioners need to get out and talk to folks, and that's one way that I think sharing that information, getting information out there, having a dialogue is one way to work with or around, if necessary, the other two Republican commissioners.
Ms. Yoder.
Yes. So, I am running to be county commissioner to solve problems, and that's what I'll, that's what I will focus on. So, whether I have a fellow Democrat with me, that would be great. I feel like I can make some of the programs work a little bit more effectively. But understanding the two county commissioners might, would be Republicans, I will focus on, I will focus on the problems. I'm data-driven, that's what my experience has shown, and I will focus on solutions that are evidence-based, and, and I feel that that's a responsibility of the county commissioners. I do have experience with both of them. I know the two current county commissioners, and I currently serve as co-chair for the opioid coalition called Joining Forces with Commissioner Parsons. And I believe that we have together have addressed a serious issue that's facing our community, and that would be my approach. I would not politicize what we're doing. I will really bring those solutions forward and will be a loud voice for all residents of Lancaster County.
And Ms. Diaz.
I do believe that in order to have a good government, we have to work with both the Republicans or maybe anyone that's in the, even in the independent party. Being in city council had gave, given me the opportunity to work with everyone. If I had to call Smucker and say, hey, I need you to see if you can work with this policy, I have done that. If I need to speak with, with DiAgostino Commissioner, I have done that as well. I think we're, we're constantly fighting and battling each other, and that needs to stop because people are tired of the constant rhetoric of the politics. We need to really focus on our community. We need to work on infrastructure, zoning. There's a lot of blatant properties in the county that we need to rebuild. So, ella preguntó que si cómo voy a trabajar con los republicanos. Yo le dije que yo represento a todo el mundo. He trabajado con DiAgostino, el igual que el congresista este Smucker, y es importante que nosotros dejemos toda la pelea para ayudar a nuestra comunidad.
And have any of you reached out throughout your candidacy so far to the current Democratic Commissioner, John Trescott, for any advice on, you know, becoming a county commissioner or how to form an amicable relationship with the current commissioners across parties? And if yes, what advice did he give? And we'll start with Ms. Yoder.
Oh, hi. So, yeah, I certainly have reached out to Commissioner Trescott to get a sense early on when he first took on the role, and then as time, as time progressed, too. And I really feel that my perspective that I explained earlier in terms of focusing on the issues, trying to solve problems, is what Commissioner Trescott has talked about as being the most important thing to do. And it is, it's been really helpful from that standpoint. He also was very helpful because he is going community to community to identify what he's hearing in terms of some, some of the most pressing issues that people in the community are also telling him that we need to focus on. So, it's been very helpful, and I would think it would be challenging from the work that I've done to solve problems in the past. I've always really looked at collaborations, building relationships, to be able to work together to come up with solutions and compromise. And I do believe with the way county government's set up with three people and the sunshine law, that I feel like that's going to be a little bit of a challenge for me to, to think that through and how we can have discussions to say, how can we compromise on coming up with true outcomes and results for the people in Lancaster County to make a difference for the quality of their life?
Ms. Diaz.
I, I do have a connection with him because I'm on the executive board of the Democratic Party, so we do talk about legislation. He has given me an enlightenment about the problems that we've had regarding the ballot and the ballot box and how hard it has been to really work with the Republican commissioners. But I do believe that, like, just like Mrs. Yoder said, that we do need to compromise. We do need to sit down and find out what is going to be fundamental for all our community. Me han preguntado si la persona que está ahí que va a salir de comisionador, que sí ha trabajado con él, yo soy parte del comité demócrata, so yo sí le ha ayudado. Hemos hablado de la pelea porque la baleta no está presentada para las personas y también que no puedan llevarlo a la caja porque la han sacado. Gracias.
And Mr. Hollister.
Commissioner Prescott has been wonderful. We've met several times, given great advice. He talks about building relationships as he has done, you know. Compliments to Commissioner Prescott. I think all three of us would agree, he's done a great job in the role, even being there temporary. He's tried to, to move some important items across the finish line. But, you know, John's advice was to build relationships, and it's much akin to, to what I had to do as a school superintendent. You know, we often were, were faced with, with two, two groups who opposed one another, and as a school superintendent, you've got to listen to everybody, and you've got to find a way to bring folks together. And so, the advice that Commissioner Prescott gave was do that, build relationships. You got to listen to people. I know as a, as a school superintendent, I always respected the, the folks who came to meetings. I respected the, the microphone. You know, that democracy in action at a school board meeting is very important. It's sacred to me. Didn't always agree with everyone at the microphone, but I always listened. And I've said this before, you know, despite what was said at the microphone, even if it was an attack on me personally, you know, I never rolled my eyes, I never smirked, I never snickered. I was always respectful. So, respectful conversations are important to have, and they're necessary if we're going to really try to understand each other and truly move, move issues and solve problems together.
And we've heard from, I believe, each of you about building relationships as a county commissioner. And in the position as commissioner, you would be working with elected officials throughout municipalities in all of Lancaster County. So, how would you work together with those elected officials in, you know, boroughs, townships, cities like Lancaster? And we will start with Ms. Diaz.
Well, that's a good question. I have a great relationship with the mayor in Millersville. I met the mayor in Lititz, and we had a nice conversation in his porch. And I also had a great opportunity to spend the Latino Heritage Month that they celebrated one day at New Holland. And I had a great opportunity to talk about how wonderful that they welcomed us to have our event there and what the police is doing. They offered their, their assistance, and the time was wonderful. So, and also because I like to be in the farm area, so I'm, I'm pretty good with, you know, talking with the community and any leaderships that's out there in order to collaborate and see what's going on in the community. So, that's one thing that I can say that I feel confident that I can work with them, and I don't see any issues. In fact, I was invited for the, the, the community plan that they had for Elizabeth Town, Lititz, and Warwick, and I, I had a great opportunity spending with them. Ella preguntó que si ha tenido problemas con las personas en el condado, que si conozco personas que son este, que trabajan para la municipación y también para poder trabajar con ellos. Yo dije que sí, que yo puedo trabajar con las personas que son, que trabajan en la, en la comunidad.
Mr. Hollister.
Yeah, I mean, it's critically important that the commissioners, again, come off the seventh floor, get out into the communities, get out into the small boroughs, truly try to understand the issues that are, that are occurring both here in the main city, but also in all those towns and boroughs because they have their own set of, of issues. You know, as a school superintendent, I was a superintendent of a rural school district, so I got to understand rural poverty. But then during a partnership that we had with Columbia Borough School District, I actually served simultaneously as a superintendent at Columbia Borough, so I got to see what urban poverty looked like. But I also saw this, too, that municipalities, including school districts, can work together, can share some services, and create some efficiencies as well as increased service at the same time, which we did at Columbia Borough. Columbia Borough, when I stepped in there as superintendent, was, you know, hemorrhaging a lot of money. $500,000 a year was being taken out of, of the savings account, if you will, and used to supplement regular expenditures. And we turned that around in a year. So, this whole idea of 67 different municipalities is a bit of a challenge for Lancaster County, 67 different taxing authorities, and it's something that I think we have to reach out to, we have to partner with, we have to work with those municipalities, try and bring them together, try and get them to share services for efficiencies. The other group that we've really got to acknowledge, and maybe we'll talk about this later, is we have a host of nonprofits that do an extremely good job serving this county. The commissioners should be partnering with all of those nonprofits that are showing efficiency and success.
And Ms. Yoder.
Yeah. So, in the role that I've been in for almost 30 years from a county standpoint, the main responsibility is to conduct the community health needs assessment. So, I've been doing that for several decades, about every three years. So, part of that whole role is to go out into the community to, to not only look at data, but to look at it by census tract, by zip code. So, I feel like I have a good understanding of the county because of that. And not only that, it's not only about data, it's about talking to the people within the community, and that means community leaders within that area. So, that's really helped me understand whether it's urban, suburban, or rural in terms of what's happening over the past 30 years. The other thing is that I was on the planning commission. So, I was on West Hemphill Planning Commission for 13 years, so I understand land use planning and zoning. But I was also on the county planning commission during the time when they developed the new county comprehensive plan called Places 2040. That plan is advisory to the 60 municipalities, townships, and boroughs in one city, and it, it provides guidance to what they can do from most, some of the most important issues facing our community. During the development of those four years, I worked closely with the planning department and went out to those municipalities and townships to be able to hear what they think, to contribute to that plan. And I think by doing that, I got to know many of them, not only the managers, but the supervisors and on the folks on the planning commission. So, I feel like I already have a relationship with many of them from various things that we were doing. Also during the opioid crisis was another time when we did a deep dive because that affected many of the mayors and the small boroughs related to that issue.
And shifting gears a little bit, in the wake of the COVID-19 pandemic, how effective do you think the Lancaster County Health Advisory Council has been in preparing the county to handle future community health emergencies? And we'll begin with Mr. Hollister.
Yeah, at this point, it doesn't seem like that board has really done much for us at all. We have some significant health needs in this county that need to be addressed, and I do not see that advisory board working to get that done. I mean, we have health issues, particularly, you know, mental health issues for our young people. As a superintendent going into COVID, I had great concerns about the mental health of our young people. Coming out of COVID, I, I don't know what to call it, catastrophic. There's just not enough services, there's not enough quality there. So, we have those challenges. We have brown and black babies dying more frequently than white babies, same with the birth mothers. So, we have, you know, we have health issues that affect us all, lead pipes. Lead pipes are an issue particularly in some of the city humps, some of the older boroughs and, and town, boroughs and, and small towns. So, so in addition to all that, we, you know, we have other issues that are coming into affect health. Climate is another one that we've got to start considering, clean water, clean air. And so, a body to, to facilitate and govern that, I think is necessary.
Ms. Yoder.
Well, I feel that this is the perfect time to develop a county health department. The county, the council that's currently serving is not a health department, meaning it doesn't have public health authority, which during COVID is what I really saw firsthand because I led many of the COVID responses, whether it's testing, contact tracing, and vaccination for outreach. So, I think this is the perfect time to develop a county health department. I think people I talk to, they say, well, don't you think the perfect time would have been before the pandemic? But I think we know now how important it would be to have county health authority, which means that we can, we'll have, be able to collect, analyze data in real time from multiple sources so that we'll be able to identify threats to public health and respond to them quickly. And a county health department would be great to prepare us for the next pandemic, but it will also be really good to look at some of the gaps that already exist in services and to reduce those gaps. Not that the county has to do it all, but they can facilitate and coordinate that with the hospitals and health clinics in the area to really make a difference for all people, particularly, you know, marginalized communities that might be overlooked. So, I really think it's important, and this is the right time to have a county health department.
And Ms. Diaz.
Well, I do believe that we, we should have had a health department. Mostly, the people that got really infected and had issues was the people of color and especially people that are Spanish. The Latino population really had a, a very, very high rate of people that expired, people that came in, they didn't know where to get tested. As I was running my Senate race, I had people calling me, and what I did was to set up their appointments because they still didn't understand what the process was. So, we need to continually collaborate also with the hospitals and other entities that can help us build that relationship and also build that department. I think a lot of time, people don't realize that if you don't know the language, you're not going to get the help. And that's what I would do as a commissioner. Me preguntaron que si había un departamento para las personas que necesitan ayuda para médica, y nosotros necesitamos ayuda porque los latinos especialmente que no sabían a dónde ir y otros que hablan otro lenguaje. Tuvieron muchas personas que se murieron, y es ya el tiempo que nosotros tengamos un departamento para la ayuda para médica. Gracias.
Mr. Hollister, both Ms. Yoder and Ms. Diaz spoke in favor of a formation of a county health department. Are you also in favor of a county health department?
I am. It's a caveat that we've got to be careful it doesn't become a political football. I mean, that's one of the things that we saw during COVID. COVID became politicized. So, I think, you know, that we've got to ensure that this county health department, while has the authority, also has buy-in so that when decisions are made, they don't become controversial or problematic or misinformation becomes the norm.
Yes, Ms. Yoder.
Okay. Yeah. So, what I, what I'd like to say is that you either have a health department or you don't have the health department. You, you apply to the state and you get that authority, and that authority gives the body that's developed to be able to identify data, identify what's happening, and do that independently. And they would be the voice for the county, which I think is different than what we have from a council standpoint. So, that is a pretty big differentiator in terms of the vital importance, I believe, for a county health department.
Shifting gears again a little bit, Lancaster County is known for being an agricultural place, but it's also a coveted space for industrial development. How would you work to preserve the county's agricultural identity while carving out space for industry to grow? And how would you approach urging and influencing municipalities to follow the goals of Places 2040? And we will start with Ms. Yoder.
Oh, great to start with me first. I love it. So, that's, I have a real passion for the new county comprehensive plan called Places 2040. For those of you that are listening in, if you haven't had a chance to check it out, please go to their website at the county and look at it. It's very easy to read. But I believe that that plan identifies some of the most critical areas, critical issues we're facing our community today, and that is where do we build and where do we preserve? Where do we preserve the beautiful farmland we, we built, we have, and then how do we preserve that land? And then where do we build? I believe that we need to find housing for people of all income levels. So, where do you think about where the housing can be, where there's currently some infrastructure? And then also, it's, transportation's a big part of that. So, how do we better improve our transportation system so we can connect people to jobs? I would, as most of, some people know, some people are not aware, the county department has developed the county comprehensive plan, but it's only advisory, and that's from a county commissioner standpoint. It's an advisory document. But I do believe that the county planning department can continue to provide technical assistance. I, as county commissioner, will be out in all the municipalities, townships, boroughs, really looking for thinking beyond boundaries, having those municipalities work cooperatively in order to achieve that goal. So, in 10, 20 years from now, we're not looking back and say, what happened to Lancaster County? Where's the beautiful farmland that we know and love? But at the same time, how do we make sure we have housing for our children and our children's children that are within the infrastructure provided?
Ms. Diaz.
Well, looking at the comprehensive plan that Elizabeth Town, Warwick, and also Lititz was showing and promoting, they really did a good job. They are basically taking care of the land and making sure that people don't build on those lands in order to preserve them. We need to preserve farmland because Pennsylvania is one of the highest in agriculture. So, it's important to have that. Now, we have also a lot of blatant properties, and I believe that if we invest in those areas, just like they will do with Rockville Square, that they will be bringing housing there. That would be very important for the community so we can have people that can't afford to live in the city, they'll be able to sustain themselves, have work which is close by. We also should invest in infrastructure and also transportation. I had recently picked up a young lady that was living in, living in the city and was working in Lancaster Hall this past weekend, and it was going to rain. And she told me, we don't have a bus on Sundays. So, those are things that we really need to invest in, not only for the city and for those that are going out to those areas, but also we need internet service for our areas in suburbia because there's a lot of people that are students that would love to have that opportunity. So, those are things that I would work on to collaborate. Y quiero decirle que nosotros tenemos muchas fincas que necesitamos este proveerle para crear mejor información para todos.
And Mr. Hollister.
Yeah, I agree. The Comprehensive Plan 2040 is a great guidepost that, that the county should be using, the boroughs should be using, the townships should be using. I've been a part of some of those planning meetings, going back to the 2020 plan, actually. And it's, it makes sense. I mean, it's a nice opportunity when you have a whole bunch of different nonprofits who contribute to that. For example, the City Alliance, the Assets Group, the Chamber of Commerce, there's just a whole lot of groups out there that are contributing to that. The opportunities that we have, for example, the new transportation hub, and that's all part of that plan. It's thinking ahead, it's planning ahead, it's getting different folks to buy into that regional planning as opposed to the silo planning that has traditionally been done. And, and the good news is, we, we're doing pretty well there. I mean, we're preserving, we're one of the number one preserving counties in the country for farmland. The conservancy continues to add to its, its, its population of acres, you know, and all of that contributes to a healthier climate, it contributes to opportunity, the walking trails that we have. And so, the, the, the planning has been going well. We need to continue to do that, continue to, to make sure we're building smart. There are still some times when I question some of that, but, you know, a lot of the building takes place along our major building takes place along our major highways where it should be. And, and of course, that allows us to preserve some more of that farmland. And so, again, it's the coordinated effort, it's the buy-in, and the balance between, you know, using our current infrastructure and making sure that's functioning well that's already in place.
And Ms. Diaz, you touched on broadband connection throughout the county more. I'd be interested in hearing from each of the candidates about broadband issues, and how would you address that as a commissioner? And we'll start with Ms. Diaz again this time.
Well, we already voted in Lancaster City Council for, I think it's called Ugo, and they've going to start working on bringing in that development into play, because we are having a lot of, in fact, I have issues sometimes in Fremont Street where it completely goes out. And it's going to be at a lesser cost, and then it's going to help the community that live, you know, in poverty level to be able to afford the internet. I think we should take and do the investment as well in the county where people don't have the actual internet service, because it seems like they're just completely out of the, the reality of life. You know, they don't know if there's a meeting in city council or, or as a commissioner, they'll be able to watch it if they can't make it to the city. So that's going to help, and I think it'll also include those students that are, were, you know, they're at home, that a lot of parents in the county do have, that their kids at home. So that would be a great opportunity to really do the investment, and us, you know, I think that, that would number one be a thing that we can do to help our community.
Mr. Hollister.
Very supportive. I think the commissioners missed an opportunity to push, and we say broadband, it's really high-speed communications, whatever that looks like. I mean, broadband doesn't necessarily mean wires, it could mean satellite communications as well. But we absolutely need high-speed communications throughout the entire county. As Ms. Diaz mentioned, there's, there's a lot of benefits to a whole host of, of different residents, you know. Students, for example, more and more of them are doing part-time online, that's something that came out of COVID, that we do have some, some students who are doing mixed and hybrid lessons, and some of that's at home. Small businesses could benefit from it, and especially in the rural sectors, as could, as could family farms. The, the one other thing that's becoming more available through high-speed communications is, is mental health counseling. And so broadband is something that the county should be sort of pushing harder for, and again, we're using the term broadband, but it's high-speed communications, so many people could benefit from that.
And Ms. Yoder.
Yeah, I absolutely think that it should be a priority from a county standpoint. I believe it's an equity and an economic development issue. From an equity standpoint, the students not having access, equal access, and parents and families to the internet, I think both works from an education standpoint and from a workplace standpoint. But certainly during COVID, that really did shine a light on the inequities that are addressing our community, and also for other people really stifled what could be done. So certainly for the students, but I also believe that from a healthcare standpoint, we really went to implement doing virtual visits and things like that, that really helped not have any breaks in what medical care that people might have needed if they were diabetics, or if they have congestive heart failure or things like that. They were still able to communicate with their physician. And the same thing on the mental health side, we were able to implement virtual visits to be able to address folks that had diet, that had depression, anxiety, and stress. And it really showed how important that could be, and really, from an economic standpoint, it was, it was pretty efficient in terms of people didn't have to travel in order to get the services that they need. So it just seems like it's a basic need that, you know, in 20 years from now, we're going to say, how could that be that we didn't have it, and we didn't have the high speed and the, the equal opportunity for people of all income levels?
And continuing in the direction of infrastructure and development, what are your plans to address affordable housing throughout the county? And we'll start with Mr. Hollister.
Yeah, so affordable housing, fortunately, we do have some projects in the pipeline, but the real challenge is, is there's just not enough of it. And so one of the things that I think the commissioners can do and should do is lean on some of those townships and boroughs to release some of their regulations, at least sunshine them a little bit until we, until we get through the crisis. So that, on one side, it's just a, it's a little reduction of regulations and, and some of the, the things that impinge the development of, of housing. Again, that housing should be clustered and centered around towns and boroughs already. We've got to be careful that we're not trying to extend our infrastructure too far. The other thing that I think is a part of this, this discussion is getting better jobs for folks. There's a great model down at Saka that has adults coming in for training. They have a great model to get folks into houses, too. They're, they're, they're buying houses and, and refurbishing them and selling them back at under-market values. And then the expectation is, is folks stay in them for a while. So they're building neighborhoods down there in, in the southeast. And, you know, neighborhoods have a certain connotation, you get to know folks, you get to rely on your neighbors. And so there's, there's a lot of pieces to the equation, but part of it really is just making sure that folks have more money in their pockets so they can afford decent homes. The other thing that, that we have to be careful about is the homeless, the homelessness in this, in the city and in the rural areas. It's another issue for another time, but that's part of the equation as well.
Ms. Yoder.
Yeah, so I believe the housing crisis is, is broader than affordable housing. There is a housing crisis overall for all income, all levels of housing. And so just for any basic unit, we need to increase the number of houses that are available for anyone, because we have an issue where people that are in houses that could be afforded, would be affordable for lower-income folks, they're not moving out of them because there's not the next level of housing. It's been both Tenfold and EDC that have identified that there are at least 7,000 new units short right now. So as we build houses for all income levels, then we'll be able to free up those for people that are in a rental property that could move to affordable housing, that would manage that stability. I believe that there needs to be a special focus on affordable housing, and it should be throughout the entire county. And I will go back to the Places 2040 comprehensive plan, because that does provide guidance in terms of how do we think about changing the zoning in a way that makes it more affordable for developers to provide affordable housing in communities throughout Lancaster County, and that we put the housing where there's current infrastructure, water and sewer, it's the least expensive way to do that. And at the same time, this is all connected, because you can see how that would be connected to preserving farmland if we, if we do the internal structure to be able to build the housing there.
And Ms. Diaz.
Well, in reference to affordable housing, Lancaster has done a really good job in voting to have like, let's say, the old St. Joseph Hospital to bring affordable housing, and obviously, that's, that's moving forward. And a lot of times, people don't realize that we do have a lot of stock of, of housing. What the problem is, is the cost. They can't afford it. You can't have a house or buy a condo if you're only making $10 or $12 an hour. That's why we really need to work with other organizations, the small businesses, and larger corporations in order to hire some of these residents so they can afford it, so that you can give them a, a living wage. This is why it's so important for us to constantly go out and support our unions. Our unions do give us the opportunity to have an, an exact amount for us to have a livable wage, healthcare, and that's where we need to focus on. So we're working completely with the, as a commissioner, and also working with zoning and other infrastructure, the economic development, in order to bring in to the county those opportunities.
It was brought up during the conversation, but there has been recent growing conversation across the county about homelessness. And if you were elected as a county commissioner, how would you address those concerns? And we'll start with Ms. Yoder.
Yes, I, I feel that the answer to homelessness is a house, is housing. So I believe in housing first to provide stability. I, and I don't believe it's just a city issue, I know if we go around the county, it's a county issue. So I feel the county commissioners are in a wonderful position to look at this more holistically and coordinate what we need to do related to providing housing for people that are unsheltered. Because it's food, clothing, shelter, Maslow's hierarchy of needs that we all learned about either in high school or in college. And you can't think about how do you self-actualize, or think about getting to your job if you don't have a roof over your head. So having a roof over your head is, is very important. I believe the county commissioners could coordinate this work, even though it's not directly responsible, but I also believe that the ARPA funds that we currently have available could be used to also address this issue throughout the county. And then once a person is housed, then you're able to better mobilize the community organizations that are really helping with individuals with mental health issues, substance use issues, and also from a health standpoint, but, you know, meant, physical health as well. So once somebody's stable, they feel good physically, they feel good mentally, then you can move them on to some stabilization. So then into transitional housing and things along those lines. But I do believe that rapid rehousing and then affordable housing needs to be out there so you can transition folks from being homeless to being able to have, be able to afford a home.
Ms. Diaz.
Experiencing homeless when I was a child, I understand that there, it's a lot broader than that. In our community, the homeless have more than just a home, not being able to have a place to live. Some of them have a drug addiction, and they also are dependent in alcohol, or they're mentally unstable. What we need is a place where they can get treatment. That's where we need to collaborate with all over of Lancaster. In fact, Littis mayor was telling me that they have one homeless person there. I said, well, come to Lancaster City, it's a lot more than that. And so talking with them, which I have, some of them want to have a place to live, they want to have the ability to go to a doctor's and get the treatment that they need. So being a commissioner, I know that I could tackle these areas and be able to take some of that ARPA money and invest it in a place where they can get the treatment. Before trying to house them, we need to make sure that they even agree to be housed, because some of them don't.
And Mr. Hollister.
Yeah, so I mean, both my colleagues here made some really good points. The homeless issue, I met with a, a mental health professional, he's been doing this for decades, and we talked specifically about the homeless population here in the Lancaster City. And, you know, he estimated that, that, you know, about 25% of those homeless folks have really serious mental health issues. The 75% could be worked with if, if the proper support and medication, mental health, and then, you know, just general health is there, we could work to transition them to, to housing at some point. But, you know, some of the most serious mental health issues there, there's, there's one person in particular who, in, in his own world, he refuses to sleep under a roof. That's his punishment, and again, in his mind, that's his punishment for something that his family did centuries ago, and that's what he's convinced himself of. And so, you know, there's a very difficult situation. It requires a specialized location, I think, for, for some of the most extreme homeless cases that we have in terms of the mental health. I will tell you this, fencing off Binns Park is not the right answer, cutting off food supply to those folks is not the right answer. There are other things that we can do, and addressing their, their mental health, their drug and alcohol addiction, and then their economic needs is the, is where we should start.
Ms. Diaz.
Yeah, I'd like to also add that incarcerating homeless people is not the answer. I think we should invest in maybe adding a different area where they're going to build a new prison, so they can stabilize that person, because it's really important for people to understand that they're not, that they're the victims, they're not actually committing a crime. Thank you.
Ms. Yoder.
So I think the point that I want to make clear is that, you know, even though what's happening in the city from a homelessness is a higher population, perhaps that's visible to people, but going into the rural areas and the suburban areas, there are people that are experiencing homelessness. I believe that there's more than one person in Littis that is experiencing homelessness. So I, and I also believe that over the past 10 to 20 years, we have reduced the number of shelters that are available. So those things need to happen throughout the county, not in one place, and it should not always be in the city.
And I agree with, with Mrs. Yoder. It is a rural issue, I was a school superintendent, and we had homelessness, and, and what, what is also concerning is sometimes how that's characterized. For example, we had a family who was living in a trailer with another family, dad sleeping on the lounge chair, kids are sleeping on the floor, and they weren't considered homeless. So we have that population that we've got to concern ourselves with, too.
It was touched on briefly in some of your answers, Federal American Rescue Plan Act funding. How would you use ARPA funds differently than the county commissioners have now? And we will start with Ms. Diaz.
Like I said before, I think we should invest in having an area where we could work with those mental health patients that are homeless and others that are looking and seeking for help that don't have healthcare, because a lot of times, they don't seek it because they don't have the plan. They don't have the actual support from the community. And investing some of that ARPA money to get them the medication, the psychiatrist, the socialist, I mean, the, the psychologist, in order to help them, it would be an important thing to do.
Mr. Hollister.
A couple areas, to seed some critical infrastructure investments that we already have, some of that is, is on the drawing board. I'm assuming we're going to talk a little bit about the prison before, before we wrap up. But also to seed businesses, especially for minorities, LGBTQ, people who are more marginalized, refugees, those folks to seed businesses and entrepreneurs, I think is a worthy investment for, for those more marginalized communities. And also, the other thing that I had mentioned earlier is, we have a, a whole host of nonprofits that are doing incredible work here. And I think if we, we created a system to vet efficiency and, and impact, I would like to see the county commissioners partnering with those nonprofits and helping them lift, because they're, they have the machinery, they have it in place. Let's not reinvent all that, but let's, let's fuel those organizations that are being really successful here in the county for us.
And Ms. Yoder.
Yes, I, I believe a larger proportion of the funds should be utilized now. I mean, therefore, to jumpstart our economy, to help people that are suffering now, coming out of the pandemic. So I believe there should be more of an investment, and I believe those investments should be in, in probably most of the areas that we spoke of today. So I do believe they can be used to, to advance the, the homeless shelters that we, we currently have, to be able to find that as a solution. I do believe those funds could be used to, to actually build a business plan, to develop a county health department at this point, to get a sense of what that's like. This is a great opportunity, it's a one-time thing, and then you move on to get a sense of what that would look like. And I also believe it should be used for broadband throughout the county as well. So those investments will pay off big dividends. So in terms of thinking about putting the money away to save it and build interest, I think saving it and building interest, it means using it now, and for those, those communities and individuals that are marginalized and will benefit from those services happening as well. And I do believe that it's a workforce development issue as well, should be used for.
Mr. Hollister, I touched on the county prison. So for all of the candidates, do you support the county's approach to building a new prison, both in its size and location? And we'll start with Mr. Hollister.
So I've become increasingly more concerned about the plan for the prison. You know, the more I learn about that, I, I really do think we need to step back and take a look at it. And, and the, the sort of the evidence I have for that is, is, you know, there are some statistics that are a little bit alarming. You know, the, the county prison costs about $30 million to run a year. $20 million of that is being spent on people who are pre-trial. So of that group, there's a, you know, nationally, more than 50% of people who are waiting for trial are not convicted. So we're housing people in the prison right now who may not even have done anything wrong. On top of that, our bail rates here are so high that folks can't pay bail. So 64% of the people who are on waiting for trial are there because they couldn't pay their bail. The whole idea of the bail system was to keep people out of that situation. And so we have to sort of redo the front side before we really look at the backside of incarceration. And I'm alarmed at some of these numbers that, that I'm finding. Lancaster County's average bail is like $57,000, the state average is 38. So, so it seems, it appears that, you know, on the front side, we're just not doing things right, and we are wasting a lot of money and potentially building a prison that's much larger than it needs to be. And on top of that, we really need to look at what's happening in that prison for non-violent offenders.
Ms. Yoder.
Yeah, I actually believe that we have an opportunity of a lifetime to build a jail that's focused on rehabilitation rather than punishment. The county commissioners play a key role in this, so a lot of times when I'm out and about, people are, are saying, well, what do the county commissioners actually do? And, and the prison is the key thing. So right now, the physical space of the jail we have, I do believe that the, the warden and people within the prison want to provide better services and, and be able to help people that are in the prison better, but the physical space in itself does not allow that to happen. And what that means is, that's a pivotal time to help people within our community that go to the prison, so that we can provide better mental health services, substance use services, job planning, and a lot of other wraparound, even health, mental health as well, physical health. And the current site does not And the current site does not allow us to do it. And that is just a really perfect time to be able to do it. I think the staff then is being trained and trauma-informed. I actually believe that the input that they receive from the community so far and how they're thinking about building it, I, I support it. I think that it will allow the space that's needed for people to feel and begin to rehabilitate so that they could be, rejoin their families and then to be productive as well from a rehabilitation standpoint.
Ms. Diaz?
I do agree with Ms. Yoder. The prison currently is, is very, is crumbling. It's a health hazard for people. The summers, it's just overbearing in heat and in the winter, they're freezing. So it's a health issue. We need, there has been, you know, areas where that you can't see that they're actually fighting and they have, you know, areas where they're, they're not safe and we need to protect them. And the reason I say that also is because we do need a section where people with, with mental health. I'll give you an example. My cousin lost her son because he was schizophrenic and he hung himself. He died there. So we, we need a place where people can actually monitor some of these patients that go in that are incarcerated because they committed a crime. Nosotros necesitamos un sitio nuevo para dar una presión. Muchas personas que están encarceladas mismo, toda la condición es muy mala. A veces no tienen calificatura o si no hacen mucho frío. Necesitamos ayudarlo y sí voy a seguir peleando para que podamos tener un sitio donde las personas que tienen problemas mentales estén seguros en la cárcel.
Yes, Ms. Yoder?
Yeah, I, I, as, I do believe that, well, as I mentioned, the, the prison is the responsibility to county commissioners. The judicial side of things is not their responsibility, but as county commissioner, I would really advocate for alternatives to incarceration. I believe that there are now evidence-based practices that can be implemented and if implemented, they will be actually reduce the prison population. There's some work going on already in our county making that happen, whether it's in the DA's office, whether it's drug court, perhaps we need to take those particular evidence-based programs to scale and it will also have an impact, not only on people's lives, but also the prison.
And as a commissioner, you would be tasked with sitting on the Lancaster County Board of Elections. How would you address concerns with mail-in voting? And do you believe the county should allow ballot curing? And we'll start with Ms. Yoder.
Yeah, so I believe that this is such a critical issue and it's the role of county commissioner. It is the cornerstone of our democracy. So we need to make sure that we have the, the voting is, has easy access and people are aware of the different ways to vote. So I am very supportive of, I would first and foremost educate the community on an ongoing basis, not to wait for just before an election year, to let them know about mail-in ballots and be able to do that. I am 100% supportive of curing the ballot with the way it was proposed this time, where the outside envelope, if not signed and dated, that people have an opportunity to be able to correct that. Most of the individuals that send in a sign-in, mail-in ballots, about 70% of, 75% of them are elderly. So let's give them the chance to correct that and make sure that their vote counts. I'm also in favor of ballot boxes. I think that that's also an access issue, particularly for the rural areas. So north, south, east, west, we can place them in places that would be secure. I've worked at the polls for over 20 years as a greeter and I've seen the amazing people that make sure that the elections are really safe and they take the job really seriously. So I feel really good about what's happening on that end.
Ms. Diaz?
I, I agree with her as well. We do need ballot boxes and we do need to make sure that our elderly and also the community that don't speak the language, which is English, they may speak a different language, that they also understand and that they're educated on how to send those mail-in ballots in and how to sign it. I, I bring, a lot of people that I have knocked doors on that don't speak English very well and don't understand on how to vote. It's very crucial because that's, that's messing with our democracy. And I would, as a commissioner, I would make sure that everybody has access to understanding and be educated on what exactly is going on when they send out the wrong ballot. I mean, I thought that was, that's not the first time that they've done that, that's the second time. So we really need to focus on making sure that everybody in our community understands what's going on. Es bien importante para que todo el mundo sepa lo que está pasando con la baleta, especialmente cuando lo mandan incorrectamente. Y recuerden que si tienen una pregunta, llama allí.
And Mr. Hollister?
Yeah, so I think we would, we would all pretty closely agree here. I, when I ran for Congress, I was supposed to that question, if there was one thing, one thing you could fix or one thing that you could ensure. And that was it. It was voting, security, safety, efficiency, making sure that people had access to the ballot box because that is where our democracy starts. That's, you know, through that ballot box, all other decisions sort of fall out of that. So absolutely ballot boxes should be, should be aplenty. I mean, I'm, every, every single retirement community should have a ballot box. Small towns and boroughs should have a ballot box. I, I think we can't really have enough of those. Ballot curing should occur. You know, what people don't understand or don't recognize is ballot curing occurs all day long during, during election. You know, your poll workers are helping people fix ballots or if a ballot doesn't go in, oh, you forgot to do this. You know, they're telling those people on-site some of those things. So ballot curing is taking place already. And so, you know, to, to fix something on the outside of the envelope, as Commissioner Prescott, Trescott just recently, you know, tried to, to move through the commissioners, I fully support that. And so, yeah, ballot curing, and then, and then we've got to make our polls safe and efficient. You know, my dad's 83 years old, he can't stand very long in a, in a polling line if he decides to, to vote in person. And so we've got to be efficient about them, they've got to be convenient with plenty of parking and, and easy access to those, those polling locations. So there's a lot we need to do and the commissioners have responsibility to do to protect our democracy.
Unfortunately, that is all of the time we have for questions and answers tonight. So we'll begin with closing statements from each of the candidates. And like at the beginning of tonight, the order that the candidates speak was decided before the forum started and we will begin with Ms. Diaz.
Well, I want to thank everybody out there that's listening. I am running to support you and the community. As you know, as a city council person, I have fought for the union police officers not to use their, lose their seniority points. I also believe in e-verification where we have contracts locally. We need to continue supporting our local residents and taxpayers. We can't be taking our contract and putting them in Miami instead of having our local artists and architects here. I also continually support the Water Rescue Mission and their services that they do. I basically have volunteered there to support them. I provide a lot of things that people don't see. I have helped mentally ill patients go to get the services that they need in the location. I have had people call me because they don't have a place to live. So as a city council person, I would take the same thing that I do now by supporting my community as a commissioner. So vote for Janet on May 16th.
Ms. Yoder?
Yes, thank you so much for having this forum. I, I am running to be your county commissioner to do the things that I've done for the past 30 years. What I love to do is to identify problems, bring people and organizations together to solve problems and to make life better for people in Lancaster County. And I do this, I am data-driven, I'm focused on thoughtful about cost, I will use an equity lens, be collaborative and transparent. I feel I have the experience to do this job and I come ready with a vision to make Lancaster County even stronger. I believe our county has been built by people with compassion and kindness. We take care of each other. I've seen it. And through that, together, we can tackle big things and hard things to make Lancaster County thrive and I would be absolutely thrilled for the opportunity to be your next county commissioner. Thank you so much.
And Mr. Hollister?
Thank you. Thanks to, to those who are watching and taking the time to, to be informed. It's really important part of the democracy is to, is to know. So thank you. Yeah, I'm, I'm excited about the opportunity to serve the citizens of the county. I, I believe my, my, my experience as a school administrator for almost 27 years, almost 14 of those as a school superintendent lends itself well to the position and in some ways, running a school districts like running a small city or a small town, you know, you have, you, not only do you understand the, the value of quality education and how to achieve it, but, you know, I've had experience with construction projects, contract negotiations in a union culture, budgeting, and we had a $60 million budget at, at Elanco. Supervision, hiring employees, recruiting, keeping employees trained, the, the whole idea of safety, security, including tech security. We have transportation issues and, and plans in, in school districts. So, you know, so much of, of what happens as a school district is sort of a, a microcosm of what, what a county operation looks like. So I'm excited to take tested leadership experience into the, into this role. Thank you.
And thank you, Ms. Diaz, Ms. Yoder and Mr. Hollister for participating in our forum. And thank you viewers for tuning in tonight. A reminder, you can read more about this race and this event later this week on Lancaster Online and in LNP. And don't forget, the primary is Tuesday, May 16th. If you can't make it out to the polls, you can request a mail-in ballot. The deadline to apply for a mail-in ballot is 5:00 PM on Tuesday, May 9th. But above all else, please vote. From everyone here in the LNP Lancaster Online newsroom, thank you for tuning in and have a good night.